Good evening, and welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for Monday, February 12, 2024. We will start with our roll call this evening.
Commissioner Hussein?
Present.
Commissioner Pika is absent with notice. Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Van Haaf?
Here.
Commissioner Henches?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Thank you. Also, in the chamber this evening, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our senior planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, Rachel Nosmush, deputy clerk to the board, is down here, and Brad Davis, our planning manager, is at the end of the podium. Also, our county commissioner, Tom Wolf, is in the audience there. And that's everyone. Our next item is approval of the January 8, 2024 Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. Commissioners have all been sent a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, the second.
The second.
Second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have four, four with one abstention. Our next item is our consent agenda. Before we open the public hearing to consider the consent agenda, I will note that all items listed are considered by the Planning Commission through routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate motion, or no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission member, board member, or public member saw a request, in which event the item will move from the consent agenda to be considered separately. At this time, I open the public meeting to consider the consent agenda. The two items that we have on the consent agenda are number 2024-003, request to approve a preliminary plat and a final plat of Schuman Third Edition consisting of two lots on 14.62 acres. James and Lisa Michael, applicant and property owners, in Section 23 of Spring Lake Township. Would anyone like to have this removed from the consent agenda this evening? At this time, I'll now entertain, or the second item we have this evening is number 2024-001. It's a request to approve preliminary plat and final plat of Mitre Bakhtal addition consisting of one lot and one outlot on 132 acres. Mark Mitre Bakhtal, applicant, and Don and Margaret Mitre Bakhtal, property owners, in Section 20 of Blakely Township. Would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing to consider the consent agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henches. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as written, noting that township boards have recommended approval.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion? This time, I'll entertain a motion, or I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
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 Consent agenda approved. If you came for those two items tonight, they have been approved in the consent agenda. Our next item is our public hearing this evening. It's number 2023-098. It's a request to approve an interim use permit for expansion of the Miranda Mine, Pentagon Materials Incorporated, applicant, and Miranda Acres LLC property owner, in Section 5 of Belle Plaine Township. And I believe Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I am going to give you a brief introduction to this project, and then I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kirsten Polly of Sunday Engineering. Kirsten can provide greater detail regarding current operations and the proposed expansion at the facility. So on the screen is a site location map of the property. The property is located just south of Highway 169 and just east of the city of Belle Plaine. The property is actually in two townships. The northern parcel here is in St. Lawrence Township. Southern parcel is in Belle Plaine Township, so it spans two townships. The property is about 115 acres in size. It's zoned urban expansion reserve and urban business reserve. Both zoning districts allow sand and gravel mines with an IUP, interim use permit. Going now to an aerial photo. Here's an aerial photo of the mine site, again outlined in red. Highway 169 here on the northwest side of the property. Access to the mine site is off of 169 here in the southwest corner. In the staff reports, you read that MinDOT is requiring or is requesting an acceleration lane be constructed at the entrance to the mine. Staff has discussed this with the applicant and with MinDOT, and we've agreed that that acceleration could be put in anytime between now and the end of next, the next mining season, the end of 2025. So that is Condition 38 that's in the permit. Beyond that, you can see the mine operation is kind of concentrated here in the southeast corner of the property. Surrounding land uses are, for the most part, agricultural and large lot rural residential. The big exception here is to the east. This is the Valley Paving Sand and Gravel Mine. This mine was before this board about one year ago with a very similar request to expand their boundaries and to mine deeper than currently permitted. Now, the interesting or the other notable feature here is the water course here to the south of the mine property. This is Brewery Creek. It is a DNR-protected water course. The mine expansion and the current mine facilities do not impact that water course. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kirsten Polly. I do want to point out that we have representatives from both St. Lawrence and Belle Plaine Township here. Both townships did recommend approval of the request before you tonight. We also have the city administrator for the city of Belle Plaine here tonight, and the city provided you written comments that were included with your packet as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Well, good evening, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kirsten Polly. I'm a registered civil engineer and geologist with Sunday Engineering, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Pentagon Materials and their request for the expansion of the existing Miranda Mine. Marty gave you a little introduction, and I'd like to take a little bit of time to go over in a little more detail the operations at the mine and the operations that are being proposed. So the Miranda Mine is located just to the southeast of US 169, between Jordan and Belle Plaine. The site is owned by Miranda Acres LLC, and it's operated through a lease agreement by Pentagon Materials. And tonight, Marty Prouser, the president of Pentagon Materials, is here, as well as Mary Cole, representing the property owner, Miranda Acres. And both Marty and Mary have been members of the local community for many decades. The Miranda Mine was originally permitted in 2018. As Marty mentioned, the northern portion of the site is in St. Lawrence Township, and the southern portion of the site is in Belle Plaine Township. Minnesota River is located up to the northwest of the site, and the Belle Plaine city limits are situated to the west of the site and southwest of the site. There are two other mining operations in the vicinity. The aerial photograph showed the Valley Paving Mine, which was in front of you about a year ago for an expansion as well. And there's also another mine to the northeast, the Schultz Mine. And that Schultz Mine was permitted, I think originally in 2019, and it is also operated by Pentagon Materials. So this is an area where there's a terrace and a nice deposit of sand and gravel that has resulted in the operation of these mines. So the mine site consists of, the property is about 115 acres, and the current mining limits encompass 38 acres of mining area. The permitted mining area right now is located entirely within Belle Plaine Township. And so Pentagon is proposing to expand to the north and to the northwest, moving into St. Lawrence Township as well. The expansion itself will be about 17 acres in St. Lawrence Township and 45 acres in Belle Plaine Township of the expansion piece, and a total of 62 acres of the expansion. So together with the existing mine operation, it'll be eventually 100 acres of mining and reclaimed area. This site does share a common mining border with Valley Paving, and one of the conditions of the permit and of Valley Paving's permit is to make sure that the end-use grades, the reclamation grades between those two mine sites are compatible and will maximize the future potential use of these properties. So the proposed expansion brings the mine to greater than 40 acres. And in Minnesota, our environmental review rules require that any mine that is 40 graders or more, any sand and gravel mine or limestone quarry, not a metallic mine, 40 acres or more must go through mandatory environmental review. So this project, an environmental assessment worksheet was prepared for this project, and Scott County was the regulatory government unit that oversaw that piece of the environmental review. The site environmental review is a process that looks at all the different, many different items of environmental topics that may be impacted or affected by the project. And it's a regulated process by the state that looks at topics like land cover, land use, how the project might affect geology, soils, topography, water resources. So it looks at surface waters, groundwater, stormwater. It looks at air and noise impacts, transportation, cultural resources, fish and wildlife, and ecological impacts. So it's looking and assessing what this project, what kind of impacts this project might have. In 2022, the EQB Environmental Quality Board updated their environmental review process, and they also added two new categories, climate adaptation and resiliency, and greenhouse gas and carbon footprint. So these two new categories were also included in the environmental review for this site. That process results in a document that's distributed for public and agency comments. It's a 30-day public comment period. And after that, response to comments are prepared. And in September of 2023, it came in front of the county board, and the commissioners adopted a findings of fact and conclusions of law and a negative declaration on the need for any further study in the form of an environmental impact statement. And the basis for their conclusion takes into consideration the extent, the type, the extent, the reversibility of any potential or likely effects, proposed mitigation measures, and the ability to control and control potential effects through ongoing regulatory authority. So through permits either from the county or the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency or Department of Natural Resources, those types of things. So the process concluded, and that the mine expansion does not have the potential for significant environmental effects. And once that process was completed, then the actual application for an interim use permit could proceed. During environmental review, no permits are allowed to be issued or considered by any government bodies. So once that project was completed in September, then we submitted an application to the county for the IUP. As Marty mentioned, it is zoned urban expansion reserve and urban business reserve, and mining is allowed under an IUP in those two zoning districts. So the current mining operations consist of preparing an area for mining by removing topsoil and the overburden. And that material is put into screening burns that are located around the perimeter of the mining area, and those burns are vegetated and stabilized. And you can see in this photograph, this flat area, that's areas where the overburden and topsoil has been removed, and it's been prepared for mining. Then there's excavation, and that takes place from the floor of the mine with usually just a front-end loader removing the material and kind of advancing towards the perimeter of the mine that's been prepared. There's also processing that occurs on the site. At this site, there is crushing and screening currently. That takes place in the recessed portion of the site, and that helps to control dust emissions as well as noise and screen the site. There's also recycling of concrete and asphalt that occurs at this site, and that is also subject to a license from Scott County, solid waste license from Scott County for that aspect of the operations. And then there is stockpiling and loading of the material that's been screened and crushed and ready for sale. You can kind of see from this diagram that the stockpiles are set up in a way that allows trucks to access these stockpiles in kind of a circuitous manner so that they don't have a lot of backing up and backup beeping alarms and that type of thing. That's just another way that the mine has been operated to reduce problems with noise. As Marty mentioned, the site is, got direct access to US 169. It's a principal arterial, and MinDOT requested an acceleration lane be built in 2025. Due not so much to any problems that this site has had, and there is no anticipated increase in traffic, but just the general increase in traffic in 169, MinDOT felt that it was appropriate to build that, build an acceleration lane. So Pentagon has been working with MinDOT just in the initial stages to look at some design options for that. Let's see. So the proposed modifications that are being requested, the first is increasing the mine limits from the 38 acres that's currently permitted to 100 acres and adhering to all the setbacks that are required by ordinance. And that additional mine area is going to be north into St. Lawrence Township and then towards the west, towards the US 169 right-of-way. The applicant's also requesting to mine up to 50 feet below the water table where good material is encountered. And this mining would be done with a backhoe or a dragline type of mining equipment so that de-watering of the mine site would not be required. And so when you utilize wet mining methods, you have, you don't have an impact to the water quantity or water supply issues with adjacent wells. And I'll get into some of the effects of mining below the water table with respect to adjacent wells in a little bit here. But the third thing that is being requested is the ability to add aggregate washing to the processing operations. Right now, there's crushing and screening. The applicant would like to also be able to put up a portable wash plant. Before any washing could occur, a Department of Natural Resources Water Appropriations Permit is required. The wash plant basically removes the fine material from the rock and produces a clean product, which is often required to meet certain specifications. The wash plant doesn't use any chemicals, and there are a series of sedimentation basins that are constructed that the wash water that contains the silt is discharged to, that sediment's allowed to settle out, and then that water, that clean water is recycled back to the wash plant. So these wash plants that are constructed with properly sized sedimentation basins usually recycle somewhere between 80 and 90% of the water. So the amount of the water appropriation is, the amount of actual water used is only that that is kind of lost to evaporation into the product that doesn't seep that down into the water table. So that's the third modification that's being requested. So, you know, the main kind of aspect of this expansion is that mining below the water table, and that can often create questions and concerns for people who have drinking water supply wells that are located around the area. And obviously, this area is not served by municipal water, so there are a number of wells in the area. This figure shows the, basically, the direction of groundwater flow is to the northwest, towards that Minnesota River Valley. There are a number of residential wells that are located further setback from the 169. There's also a well that's immediately downgradient of the mining operation. And so as part of this application, a groundwater monitoring program has been proposed and would be part of the conditions of the permit. And you can see there's three monitoring wells that have been proposed. One is located immediately downgradient of the mining operations and upgradient of the closest residential well. That well has a construction well log associated with it. It's a very deep well that's finished in a lower aquifer system, not in the upper aquifer system here. So it's well protected by a layer of, a confining layer that separates the two aquifer systems. But nonetheless, there will be monitoring wells that will be put in, and they will be installed, and baseline sampling will be collected for two rounds of baseline sampling before any mining below the water table occurs so that we'll have an idea if there's any existing impairments to the groundwater before mining starts. And you can also see on this diagram, there are also three, Valley Paving has three monitoring wells that are also associated with their operations. So collectively, this area has six, will have, will have six groundwater monitoring wells. And again, with the Valley Paving one, there's one immediately downgradient from their operations and upgrading from the closest residential well up to the, it's the Druzen well. And in that case, there is no construction log that was available. And this is just kind of background information, but their Valley Paving's permit requires them to sample that private well as well. So there's a lot of monitoring that is going to be in place to make sure that there is no groundwater quality impacts. And with that, there's also several other measures that are implemented at the mine to protect groundwater quality. So the number one contaminative concern in a mining operation is typically fuel, petroleum products that are stored and handled on-site. And all of the fuel that's stored on-site is done in accordance with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency rules. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency also has an MPDS/SDS permit that regulates groundwater and stormwater discharges from the site. There is also, it also requires a pollution prevention plan. That pollution prevention plan is, it used to be called Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, but it also has elements of spill prevention and fuel storage and things to make sure that there's not groundwater contamination as well, good housekeeping measures, and several best management practices that are relevant to the sand and gravel mining industry that are part of that pollution prevention plan, including the spill prevention and response policies. So there's also then the groundwater monitoring plan that I just talked about, that establishes the groundwater flow direction, the three proposed monitoring wells, and then baseline sampling. And the monitoring plan calls for quarterly monitoring of what's called BTECs, benzene, tylenine, ethyl benzene, and xylanes. And these are contaminants that are typically associated with fuel. And there are federal and state drinking water standards and guidelines that have been established for these compounds. So they're good parameters to include in a monitoring program because they're most likely, if they're detected, it indicates that there has been some kind of petroleum contamination, and we have drinking water standards that we can compare results to. The groundwater monitoring plan has provisions for if there is detection of any of these elements that there's reporting requirements to the county and actions that would need to be taken before it would get to the, even if they're below these federal drinking water standards. So that is part of the groundwater monitoring plan. And the other probably primary thing that the expansion does is it changes the reclamation of the site. So we had an approved reclamation plan with the expanded mining area that had to be revisited and new grades established. And so these grades were established to accommodate the future extension of sanitary sewer, which has been planned to come in from the south from the city of Belle Plaine and to establish a condition that's suitable for urban development. The general base grades in the area that the existing mining operation that had been previously approved were held to those grades essentially. And as a result, mining into the water table and balancing the materials on-site available for backfilling and constructing upland area that can be developed in the future, there will be two water features that'll be created, leaving about 40 acres, about 10 acres total of water body in that 100 acre, 115 acre site. The reclamation plan also allows for the future extension of County Road 8. That's this right-of-way that's shown running through the site. We worked with Scott County and their consultants as they were designing some preliminary alignments and grades for that future extension. And we've had, with Pentagon meetings with the county regarding if we need to modify those water bodies in some way as we get closer towards final reclamation, we'll be working with the county to make sure that everything is accommodated in terms of that County Road right-of-way. There's also, because this site is going to be returned eventually into a state that is suitable for final development and not just necessarily agriculture, there has been a reclamation backfill plan that has been provided as part of the application package. And it's similar to what we went through with Valley Paving as well, where it's important that the type of material that's used to backfill areas is suitable for that purpose, that it's compacted appropriately, particularly where you have the area within Belle Plaine Township that could eventually be served by the sewer and water and within the mueselat and the roadway, making sure that that's reclaimed and backfilled to standards that are suitable for the county for building that roadway. So the backfill reclamation plan includes specifications for the types of materials. And areas that have been mined below the water table are backfilled with granular material. If there are areas that are going to be built in, usually you have some kind of surcharging for a period of time, and that's monitored with settlement plates to make sure that you can get sufficient compaction from the granular material that you've used as backfill below the water table. Also, there's, just to make sure that there's no material that comes into the site that may be contaminated, that's used in reclamation. There's a manifesting procedure that's specified. So any material that comes in to be used for reclamation needs to go through testing to make sure it's compatible, clean, compatible, free of organics, and free of contamination. And that process is also part of the reclamation backfill plan, and then providing that manifest information in annual reports. And all of these mine sites do have annual reports that are required as part of their permitting process. So wrapping up, the, you know, permit that's being requested is an interim use permit that the county issues. It's also important to keep in mind that mining operations are also subject to many other permits. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency issues permits for stormwater, groundwater, air emissions, the DNR Water Appropriations, Department of Health, wells and drinking water standards, and then MSHA's mine worker safety, health and safety. So it is a regulated facility, and it's been operating since 2018 with no complaints. So with that, I'd like to thank you and be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, it's quite a, quite a report. I have a couple of questions, if I could, please. How much of the, of the increase area are you going to be mining below the water table?
Well, potentially, wherever there's good aggregates encountered beneath the water table. So in bores that have been conducted, some of it is sandier, some of it has a higher percentage of rock. And so in order to be economically viable, you mine more where there's the good rock. So it's not that all of the area would be mined to 50 feet below the water table. It might just be 25 feet for the most part, in some areas that may go deeper.
All right. And how far down is it total? Are you 100 and 150 acres? Are you 150 feet down from the surface?
It's only about 30 feet from the, from the existing grade to the bottom of the pit right now.
Currently.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, we're just kind of open face mining, staying above our water table. Going into the water depth, I mean, it's pretty tough to tell. I mean, you can't really run an arc system down because the water can aggregate cavities. You don't really get a good sample for 30 feet.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, good. And then finally, this, you went over, at least tried to explain, but what happens if a monitoring well finds pollution or something has oil in it? What, what do you do about it? I mean, who fixes that?
So if a monitoring well would detect something, the first thing you do is resample to verify. First, county gets contacted. You resample, you verify. If there is an issue, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency gets involved right off the bat because they are the ones that have the rules regarding cleanup of petroleum contaminated soils. And it is, if it's from the mining operation, it's the mining operator pays for that.
Right. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Watson, did you? Do you want me to comment?
I only, I wanted you to expand a little bit more about the groundwater contamination for existing private wells, the potential for contamination. And I think you can give us a little bit of assessment as to if this has ever occurred and what mining practices would prevent that from occurring.
Right. So, you know, there's many areas in Minnesota where mining below the groundwater is, is practiced routinely. There's, in southern Minnesota, there's so many of the deposits are, are all below the water table, the water table's high. Throughout the metropolitan area, there's many examples in, well, in Scott County, there's examples, prior Lake aggregates has mining below the water table and has for decades. They monitor, they've never had any groundwater contamination issues. The Dakota County has several mining operations that are below the water table and also those are monitored. I don't, I've not heard of any groundwater contamination issues associated with those. Hennepin County, mining below the water table up near Maple Grove. And again, all of those are regulated locally and there have not, there's not been any contamination associated with those sites either in terms of groundwater and drinking water standards being, being.
Thank you. I think Kramer Quarry is a prime example.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, but Kramer Quarry, well, it's interesting because Kramer Quarry dewaters, but the water that they dewater there, I mean, they're active, they're mining, that water is then part of the city of Burnsville drinking water system. Yeah, yeah, and Savage, yeah.
Commissioner Robbins? How fast are, you know, if we just start in time and something happens, how quickly do the monitors find out about it? I mean, would something be able to go on for a week or do you monitor so that if something happens from one day to the other, you can find out about it?
So part of, part of the, part of the operating plans is when they're, when the site is active and there's people there, the spill prevention, if, if there's spills, they're required to be reported to the PCA, right? And with mining operations, they have available, if you think about what it, what typically people do if there's a spill, they use sand to absorb the oil, they pick up the sand and they put it into a barrel and that gets hauled off site and gets disposed. Or they put it, if it's a lot of sand or a lot of oil, they take the excavator material, put it on a plastic barrier, and then a truck comes, they haul it offsite to a landfill or a treatment facility. Mining operations have all that equipment immediately available. So if there's a spill, it's very easy to clean that up and react quickly because they've got a front end loader and they've got equipment to excavate it. And as far as time, so small spills and drips like that, they get, if, if, if that happens, those get cleaned up right away. And there's protocols that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has and what to do with, if you have spill cleanup, like absorbance, for example, if there's a spill and you use absorbance, there's protocols and regulations on how you handle that material that has to be disposed of correctly. And it's considered, oil soaked waste is considered something that has to be handled in a, in a specific manner. If there was groundwater contamination, then groundwater moves relatively slowly. So it's not like a river running underground. It has to go through all these grains. And so that's why for these types of sites, monitoring, most sites, a lot of them are just annually that they monitor the groundwater. This is, we're proposing three times a year, quarterly, not winter quarter, there's problems with winter, monitoring in the winter. So because it, because it moves so slowly essentially, it is why. You, you don't continuously monitor the groundwater. And, and contamination would, would go in a, it disperses and it creates what's called the plume. And so by separating those groundwater down gradient monitoring wells, you are increasing your chances of picking up any source that is further up gradient as that groundwater diffuses into this plume. So it's not something that, and then if you were, if there were to be an issue and you had to correct it, those are things like pump and treat systems or, you know, so those all take time. It's not instantaneous, but what you can do if there's an issue with it, you can start implementing monitoring of down gradient wells. And so that a well will know whether or not it's contaminated, supplying additional or an alternative water supply, those types of things.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Kristen, I, you know, I'm all in favor of mining and resources and restoration. It sounds like you have a good plan for restoration. I just have a couple of questions about the backfilling and so forth and dewatering. Hydraulic fill, I'm not against that down 50 feet. It's going to be granting the material put in place in the water table and you're going to put 10 to 15 feet of engineered fill on top of it in the back. The engineer is going to support those buildings. The thing that I have a little bit of concern, and I know you're going to surcharge it too, which will help a little bit, I worry a little bit about dewatering. If anybody went in, deep dewatering in this area, I see there's a sewer that maybe be 15 feet below the water table would have to be dewatered and put in place. If that is the case, if the infrastructure is put in before the buildings are built, it's not a big deal. But if the buildings are built and then you come in with infrastructure, which seems like it'd be backwards, but if it did, there, I think there's some risk to the building settling from the dewater. But if it's done before, doesn't matter really. So what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that the, the plan is to reclaim it and return it to agriculture until it's ready for development. It'll be ready for development once you get the sewer and water in. So I, I agree with you, there is definitely a risk if you were to build buildings and then put in the sewer and water, that would be, potentially there would be settlement issues. And so I think that anyone who, who would build on this property is also going to be looking at what the sanitary sewer, you know, what that line is and when and.
It'd be logical, the infrastructure be put in before the buildings go in place. And as far as Mr. Robbins talked a little bit about contamination, there's a plume, there's ways to take care of that too. If you had to, you could put pumping wells in to take care of a plume that ever did happen. So I don't think that'd be a big issue, could be controlled.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to add on to what Kristen and Commissioner Huber were talking about. Our land use zoning out there, the urban business reserve and the urban expansion reserve districts are both 1 and 40 densities. So if it's developed under those densities, you're talking two residential units on the 100 acres. So you're not talking a lot of building. And the main intention of those zoning districts is to hold the land till public sewer and water comes out there and then the property develops with those, with those services and utilities.
Mr. Chair, Marty, is, is the city, is it zoning looking down the line? Does that be residential or does that be commercial?
It's a mix.
Mix?
There's a mix.
Okay. Either way, yeah. I assume it'd be rezoned smaller lots, as city lots versus 140 acres.
Yeah, I would assume that would be.
Assume that too. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. If there's additional questions.
Mr. Chairman. My travels, I noticed that there is an entrance off Old Highway 169 Boulevard. Is that ever going to be used for, being used for any particular purpose other than that it's there?
That there is an entrance to the site on Old 169?
It looks like there's one, yeah, there's a gate there.
No, on Old 169, that doesn't border our property. There is an entrance off 169, an old agricultural field approach, but that's off the main highway.
Yeah, it's off the main highway, yeah, yeah. Are you ever going to use that at all?
No.
They are, not the, not the miners are not using it by agricultural.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
One quick question is, do you have any plan for after use? Where do you want to use this land after?
After mining is complete.
Activities ended.
So after the mining is ended, then the reclamation is completed, which is done in phases. And then if, if the timing is right and, and it's, you know, there's development pressure, then my, my guess is it could go directly into getting sewer and water and development. And if not, it'll be returned and it likely will be returned to an agricultural use for some time after mining until such time that there's development pressure and the county road extension occurs and sewer and water extension occurs and then final development.
It's just conjecture or is, you see, you actually want to use it for it or just hypothetical?
For, for agricultural or for some future development?
My question was if there's a proper use plan for this, of the land that will be available. Is there any plan or not?
So Commissioner was saying, this area is, is in the city of Belle Plaine's future development plan. So the idea is the city of Belle Plaine would eventually extend their boundaries, utilities out into this area and it would develop with those, those utilities in the future. So if the timing is correct, as Ms. Polly was saying, that the mine is reclaimed and we're ready to, to develop with those public utilities that, that plans that, that conform with the city's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, they would move right into that. If it wasn't ready for that, it would likely be returned to some type of agricultural use, some type of row crop or something like that until the timing was right.
In the comprehensive plan that we have, is there, you, this property is, after, after this activity, this property is to be used for agricultural purposes or for building residential purposes? What is the plan?
For the county's plan, if it will remain in the townships and it's part of the county's plan, then it would be returned to agricultural use.
Okay. Another question is regarding, in one of the presentations that you had, you said that's backfill, or can you? Yeah, this one, the reclamation backfill. So backfill specifications have been developed for the project. So have you developed your own specifications or is there any standard that you have gone through?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Yeah, so we developed a background, a backfill specification based on standards in the industry. And it is submitted as an attachment to the IUP application so that, and it was also submitted as part of the environmental review. So it has been reviewed by county staff and it's, it's consistent with other reclamation backfill plans for mines in the area as well.
That's, that's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. This is a public hearing. If you'd like to make comment on this application before us, just please come up to the podium and start with your name. And there's a sign in sheet there as well, if anyone would like to make comment at this No one's rushing up to the podium, I see, so I'll ask one more time for anyone who would like to come up to the podium. If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Henskes. All in favor of what, aye? Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion or?
Mr. Chairman. Based on the criteria for civil and conditions listed in the staff report, I recommend the rule of the interim use permit for Pentagon materials to operate a sand and gravel mine during the state hours and Belle Plaine Township.
Recommended approval of this request.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion by the commissioners at this time before I call for a vote on this motion? Okay, seeing none. At this time, all in favor of the motion? Vote aye? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your report and for your information this evening as well.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is the reelection Secretary for the Planning Commission.
I'm not going to do anything here.
Perhaps Mr. Davis could fill us in here.
Yes, someone else can.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so last month, we did elect all of our new officers for 2024. That included the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary of the planning commission. In the nomination for the secretary, the nomination was Rachel's position, deputy to the county board, or to the planning commission. In reviewing our zoning ordinance, we realized that it had to be a member of the planning commission to be nominated for that position. So we are just going to ask for a redo of that specific position, the secretary of the planning commission.
I thought there was a question at that time.
We questioned it. Is there a reason, legal reason here or?
Well, we went into the statutes and under statute 394, that allows counties to do planning and establish planning commissions, it's very clear that the statutes say that the planning commission shall elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary among its members.
But not the board of adjustment?
But not for the board.
Okay.
Interesting. Okay, at this time, I'll call for election of our officers and we'll go directly to the open nominations for Secretary of Planning Advisory Commission.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Kent Robbins for Secretary of Planning Advisory Commission.
I will second.
I have a nomination for Kent Robbins in a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Huber, and the nominations, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Then I will call for a voice vote, nominate, or vote on the nomination of Kent Robbins for the Secretary of Planning Advisory Commission for 2024. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. Chair, I abstain.
All in favor with one abstention? Congratulations, you're an honest secretary. Thank you for clarifying that as well. Our next name is our planning manager. I'll go to Mr. Davis for that.
So the county board has taken your recommendations and made final action on January 16th. They approved the. They approved the rezone from transition reserve to transition reserve cluster to separate the farmstead from the rest of the property. Palma G Farms was the applicant property owner in Cedar Lake Township. They also approved the rezone from A1 to A2 to again, separate the farmstead from the rest of the land. Randy Kubisch was the applicant Hazel Jones trustee, and Revocable Living Trust was the property owner that was in Belle Plaine Township. Last week, the county board did approve the amendment to our zoning ordinance, the chapter six related to the watershed standards in the Parley, Spring Lake watershed district. So, that was approved. No other updates. We're looking at what March could look like. It could be a lighter agenda. If it is, we will probably do some workshop items and we'll let you know what those are in advance. Or it's possible that we don't have a meeting in March. We're trying to find out what applications need to move forward that month. April, we are expecting a lot of agenda items.
We don't have a March meeting, it'll be just like we didn't have any winter meetings.
What winter?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can I ask? There's a moratorium right now that's on marijuana. Yep. Is there anything about that or not?
That's what I want to workshop in March or April and get some more information to you. There's still, we still do not have a model ordinance to work from, from the state. We're hoping to start seeing that in the next month or so and then use that model to frame up the approach we want to take here at the county. I've started attending some meetings and gathering information, so that's what I'd like to bring back, probably in a workshop setting.
All right, very good. I'd like to hear that.
Mr. Chair, Brad, did we reach out, we talked about this, like Colorado that's had marijuana for a decade almost already, and there are lessons learned type stuff?
Yep.
We get some feedback on that, too.
We did do that, yep. I've shared with you, I think, in an email, some feedback, but I'll do that again in a workshop to sort of refresh your memory. Yep.
Yeah, good. Are you anticipating a busy spring for the planning commission? I mean, ultimately, as we come up, you're saying April looks busy.
Yeah, I think, looking to Marty.
Guys get more of a sense of what's in the pipeline.
Yeah, we feel it in the pipeline. We could see a busy April, May, June. You concur with that, Marty?
Yeah, I think with the rural business reserve stuff that's coming, we'll be seeing some subdivisions and then conditionally use permits to fill those lots. So, I think it could be fairly busy again with more of the commercial, industrial, light industrial uses more so than the residential.
The residential floor, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just interested, just for, why is that? Is it, it's not just spring, is it because businesses changed or people are just saying they want to go now in 2024? Is there?
I don't know that there's a specific reason.
Okay, all right.
Maybe it's the way we live, where more stuff comes in the truck. Businesses are doing well, they're expanding.
Yep.
Looking for locations to grow.
Yeah. All right, that's fine, thanks. Just one other issue that seems to be out there is the orderly annexation in the cities. Is that, do you see that coming back to us at some point down the line?
Yeah, that is another item I thought I'd workshop on. There's been a lot of discussion at all levels, at the townships, at the cities. It's been a topic at scale. So, I think there's a lot of different conversations happening. And I would want to update you a little bit on some of the specific issues that we've seen here at this meeting and give you an update on where things are at. But generally, it's a hot topic. And I think scale would like to organize an event to get a lot of people talking about it and coming up with solutions.
Sounds like a good idea with that bit.
So, more to come on that.
Right. Because we've seen that kind of boil over in our public hearings here a couple of times. Brad, if scale does do something, you'll keep us posted on it.
Yes.
Because I think some of us might like to, you know, put our two cents worth in on it.
Yep, yep.
As far as next number means, you see a lot of board of adjustment or mostly planning? Hard to say.
Of course, the planning commission. I think the one item we have for next month is a board of adjustment at this point.
That's the only thing?
You're going to be there. One of the reasons why we've had.
It sounds like a good training.
That's a good train.
One reason why we've had a lot of board of adjustment items is because they used to go to the Spring Lake, Parley Lake orderly annexation board. And so, if you recall, two months ago, we had a couple of items that were in that Spring Lake area, and that's where this next one would come from. The Spring Lake, Parley Lake orderly annexation board is, no longer exists until they renew and update their agreement. So, in the meantime, any variance requests that happens in that area, we've directed to this group. So, that's why we're seeing a few more on the agenda.
I have a question, Brad. We had all those contentious hearings about the YMCA, and then we all went out to see the place. And it was, have they had any complaints? Is it great?
I'm not aware. Have you guys heard anything?
No, nothing.
Nothing.
Isn't that great?
This seems like a perfect place for it.
Yeah, it does. And it's a beautiful thing.
You and I, I mean, if you haven't been out there, you ought to go there.
Yeah, we all went out there.
I had a private showing.
Oh, well, you're special. Yeah.
I just see them properties are right up to it, but the properties are so far away.
Mr. Chair, one other thing, Brad, just, you know, maybe put or think about it, we might want to take a tour sometime late summer, early fall, like we did last year.
Yep.
Those are worth everything.
Yep. Commissioner.
Beer factory.
I was going to say marijuana.
Yeah. Don't we have a marijuana or a beer factory?
No. Not yet.
Do they have sampling things at a marijuana store like they have at a beer place?
No, they don't do that.
Anything else for the cross?
Nope.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henshaw. All in favor of what, aye? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, have a good evening.